Through October one, obviously hate that. I wish we could be meeting in public or in person right now. You know, we've looked hard at the COVID statistics. Unfortunately, if you saw the Indy Star last week was the record number of cases in Indiana. And the good news is you won't have to put up with me in person. My presidency will be over October one. So there's a silver lining there, but we we put your health at the top of the criteria in making that decision. And we're also holding off right now for social outings. But as soon as we feel that the, you know, we're in a better situation, we will Roger and Wendy will work on having a social here. Taylor, I'm going to have you because I need to pull up something here. I'm going to have you give an update on our legacy campaign. We've got some good news here.
Yeah, so we are at oh, just over $95,000 over $105,000 goals or 91% of the way there. So just need a few more to get there. So that I got for that.
Taylor, any other updates while if you can bear with me a minute? Any other updates that I need to make certain that we're aware of?
I don't think so. I think you've covered everything, but I'll put a link here in the chat. If you want to consider giving to the club in lieu of lunch, we can put I'll put that there. And I added also our annual report went out. So that's also in the chat. If you wanted to look at the annual report online too. So that's what I've got, Graham.
Thank you. Well, we're going to introduce our guest speaker here in honor to have him. And I hope I have the pronunciation right. He can he can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are honored to have Ossaly with us today. He is the president of the Indianapolis City County Council and represents District 11, which covers a large portion of downtown Indianapolis and parts of the near west side, including the campus of I U P U I. Mr. Ossaly was elected president of the City County Council by unanimous vote in 2018. And he's currently Chair of the Council's Rule and Public Policy Committee and serves on the Public Works Committee. He enjoys working with fellow public servants on both sides of the aisle. It's refreshing to hear President Ossaly committed to addressing the important issues of the day equity fair and affordable housing homelessness, reentry, police community engagement, inclusive urban, which impacts the daily lives of Indianapolis. He was first elected to the council in 2011. He was a member of the Indiana Fire and Building Services Commission from 2001 to 2005 Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals from 2005 to 2008. He served on a number of civic boards, including the YMCA, United Way and Children's Museum. And in 2010, he was the Democratic candidate for Indiana Secretary of State. He's got a background in architecture. He's led urban design and architecture projects throughout the United States, Africa and the Middle East, and was a founding partner of A2 SO4 Indianapolis based architecture design company that was one of the first lead certified firms in the nation and served as a missionary to Haiti and other developing countries. Quite an impressive resume here. He graduated from Carnegie Mellon, a great school there in Pittsburgh with a degree in architecture and earned a master's degree in from Columbia. He and his wife Una are the proud parents of two amazing children, Renzi and Tapia. So, Mr. Ossaly, we are honored to have you and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Wow. Thank you so much. Can can you all see me? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate that very nice introduction, very kind introduction and the invitation to join you all today. My thanks for each of you for being on on this call today. I think our Zoom calls have become totally and completely indispensable in this age of COVID. So we can all do it from the comfort of our homes. And I think I think we're going to get used to it. So while it's no substitute for in-person fellowship, I am grateful nonetheless that we live in an era where this form of connection is an option. Because connection, I believe, is what our society and our Indianapolis community need most in these difficult days. And it's not always easy to find or easy to achieve. Even in my own life, I'm not sure that the fabric of our society has been stretched or frayed as we find it now. So when I say that I'm grateful for this form of connection and for groups like Kiwanis, keeping these lines of connection open, I mean it quite sincerely. Organizations like Kiwanis are the bedrock of our of our society, the ecosystem that influences social change. And this ecosystem, poor or marginalized people can be connected with groups that can mobilize support for help, precisely as you all have done in your support of the children of children at Riley Hospital, with the recipients of the Abe Lincoln Scholarship. And most importantly, this ecosystem fosters the kind of democratic citizenship without which this country cannot function. So as you all well know, civil society composed of organizations like the Kiwanis has throughout our country and our community's history, taken on the role of leading great movements of change, including civil rights, gender equality, and other parity movements. And over this time, this fosters changes in power and infuses a new prevailing wisdom into family, into society, into courts and into businesses. It's a critically important role, and you all perform it very well, which is why today I want to talk with you about the next great movement of change, in which clubs like yours can play a very vital role. And that movement is towards racial equity. I'm well aware that these conversations can be can feel difficult, and most of us have spent our adult lives studiously avoiding conversations about race in forms like, you know, like this one, believing them to be impolitic or impolite or both. Like discussing religion or personal finances, discussions of race and racial inequities don't necessarily fit with our with our Midwest nice aesthetic. I believe, though, that truly living up to our reputation as a city that is authentic on Midwest nice, to and for all, requires that we take up uncomfortable issues and conversations that are awkward to discuss and very, very difficult to ponder. And more than that, I think that we have arrived at a moment as a city and as a nation that demands a thoughtful, meaningful discussion of the racial inequities that permeate our society. Inequities that many of us, myself included, have come to believe would change slowly if they changed at all. And then, of course, COVID-19 hit and government, business and public health leaders moved with a speed I'm not sure we have seen, and I'm not even sure that we knew that we had it in us. Among the many lessons COVID-19 is teaching us, one of the first was just how quickly we could accomplish a wide array of really important tasks. Let me give you a few examples. Partnering with the Indy Chamber in creation of their Rapid Response Hub and funding $20 million worth of small business loans, providing $2 million to our excluded city who did not receive federal funding, providing over $1 million to the Rapid Reemployment Hub stood up by our partners at Employee Indy, to have a coordinated response process after supporting and re employing residents who lost their job due to COVID-19, and $1.5 million for adult basic education to help folks get back on their feet, providing emergency funding to Second Helpings and the professional blended street outreach teams, providing ready to eat meal packages to our neighbors experiencing homelessness, and over $2 million to Gleaners and over $1 million to the Indy Hunger Network to provide in-home food delivery for seniors and those who lack transportation, $2 million in shelter assistance for our neighbors experiencing homelessness, $2 million in PPE grants to nonprofits, $5 million in restart grants to small businesses to purchase PPE through the Indy Chamber, $3 million in face coverings for free distribution throughout Marion County, $20 million in contact tracing that we utilize countywide, but will also be important for schools when they reopen, and $15 million for rental assistance to our neighbors who will struggle to pay rent due to furloughs, layoffs, and other employment issues related to COVID. Also, we will have spent over $70 million on direct service programs to our constituents and small businesses as a result of the pandemic. And I'm happy to report that all these programs passed our council with unanimous and bipartisan support. But programs that previously would have taken many months to put together have been stood up in weeks or even days. And not only did we do it, I think somewhat nimbly, we did it with a spirit of bipartisanship that's becoming hard to find at other levels of government. And not only did we move quickly and in a bipartisan way, I think that we achieved real results. Around the country, the average size of a paycheck protection program loan to date is $113,000. In Indianapolis, it's been $18,000. Because as opposed to the national stories you've read about, giant companies getting PPE funds in Indy, we've been successful at targeting those loans to truly small businesses. And in spite of traditional narratives about how difficult it is to get participation from minority and women veteran owned firms in Indianapolis, 52% of our PPE loans went to women owned firms, 37% went to black owned firms, 11% went to Latinx owned firms, and 1% went to veteran owned firms. Now, don't misunderstand me. I'm not meaning to imply that COVID-19 doesn't still represent a difficult challenge to our government and to our economy and a dangerous threat to our populace. It does, and will likely continue to do so. But what we've learned from our city's response to COVID-19 is that our local government can act with alacrity and bipartisanship to deploy effective programs in a way that mitigates longstanding disparities based on race, place, gender, or identity in our community. And if we can do it for COVID-19, then we could do it for America's other current crisis, the one that came to renewed and anguished life in the wake of George Floyd's death. Seems that America and Indianapolis seem ready to address our legacy of race and racism. Conversations once considered very, very difficult, but are now imperative. And that's why many of you may have noticed a flurry of recent activity from the council around issues of racial equity, including efforts to reform law enforcement policy in a way that rebuilds trust between law enforcement and community, and particularly communities of color. Now, this can be an uncomfortable topic to discuss, and I know that for many people the idea of police is one of safety. And consequently, a conversation about police reform can feel like a threat to one's own security. And that's not in any way to suggest that law enforcement officers as a group are responsible for this predicament. They are not. Part of the challenge lies in the sheer volume of problems we as a community have laid at the feet of our law enforcement and community partners. But I do also believe that there is a need to prioritize public and public safety, much as the council and Mayor Hogshead can only govern with the consent of the governed. Our law enforcement partners must have the consent and the cooperation of the community which they police. And like members of the council, law enforcement officers are public servants. And as public servants, we, myself included, must all approach our jobs with a clear understanding that we should be not only responsible, but responsive to our constituents. And only then can we rebuild the trust that is vital to ensuring both the safety of our of our citizens and our place. Now, while the case for racial equity can and does rest squarely on moral grounds, the concept of equity will play an enormous role in our economic recovery and growth in a post-COVID world. For businesses, a focus on racial equity is critical in order to innovate, to create products and services that serve a more diverse customer base and to cultivate a strong workforce. By 2030, a majority of young workers will actually be people of color. And research shows that more diverse teams are better able to solve problems in a company's with more diverse workforces, have higher revenues, more customers, and greater market shares. Advancing racial equity does not mean that everyone will be treated the same or that everyone will achieve the same level of success. That is not the case. It does, however, require that we create the conditions to fully and fairly include everyone so that all employers, customers, and suppliers have the opportunity to reach their full potential. Consider that by 2044, America will be a majority will be a majority people of color nation. And this is a dramatic shift for a country that was 80% Caucasian as recently as the 1980. Yet there are enormous inequities that people of color face in health and in wealth, employment opportunities, and more. These twin forces of rising diversity and persistent exclusion form a core challenge that American businesses must address to remain competitive. Consider too, America's enormous racial wealth gap. The median net worth of a white household is 13 times that of a black household and 10 times that of a Latinx household. In Indianapolis, the median income for a black household is $32,000 compared with nearly $54,000 for a white household. And addressing those discrepancies unlocks tremendous potential gains. Data in the National Equity Atlas show that the national GDP could be up to $2 trillion higher if the wage disparity between employees was eliminated. The buying power of black and Latinx people has consistently risen since 1990. In 2018, it was estimated to be 1.3 trillion and 1.6 trillion respectively. Though that buying power has undoubtedly taken a significant hit from COVID-19, the changing demographics of our country mean it's just a matter of time until that power rebounds. Businesses that overlook the circumstances, preferences, and needs of people of color do so at their own peril. How then can our local businesses begin to embrace racial equity as an organizing principle? It's a question that we're asking ourselves on the council now. It starts with asking the hard questions about whether we as a business community are now compared with what we want to be, with where we want to be. Are our boardrooms and management teams truly representative of our community? And what about our frontline staff? And how are allocating opportunities for advancement and professional development? The council is asking these questions of our city as well. And for the first time, the hearings on the city in the city's 2021 budget will include meaningful conversations about how and whether we are allocating city dollars to advance racial equity goals. Public policy and decisions made by elected officials for generations have got us to the point that we are today. And we, as government officials, have to have to answer to that. Now, it will take time to build up all of our neighborhoods in our city equitably. The conversations like this one today will be difficult, but necessary. I understand that your most recent club meeting was also around the topic of equity. And I'm thankful that you're engaging in this meaningful dialogue. And it is encouraging to me that leaders such as yourselves are embracing this discussion. I want to say thank you for that. You know, a member of your club actually works in my office, a fellow by the name of Brandon Hergit. Share with me a little bit about the Abe Lincoln Scholarship Program and the great work that you all do in so many other ways in our community. And I want to thank you not just for engaging in this discussion about equity, but for your work in lifting up and supporting students in need who far too often are students of color. Now, a government alone cannot solve these problems. These complex and deeper problems, I should probably add. As I wrote in an op-ed last year in response to disturbing video interaction between an IMPD officer and a student, we must always remember it is not, nor has it ever fundamentally been, us versus them. There is only us, and we must all make this walk together. So thank you again for the invitation to be with you today, albeit virtually, and thank you for the commitment that you've made to our city. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ossaly. We really appreciate it. And let's do questions via the chat. And we've got the first one here. How can service clubs help to rebuild downtown Indy?
All right. So you started with the easy one. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. It is, first of all, by understanding what our needs are. And I would imagine that most of us, you know, who are in this in this room, you know, today, know individuals, you know, who are business owners downtown. What we need to do downtown is drive business back to downtown. One of the reasons that the city put up $1 million for a marketing effort is to get more people to know that, you know, we are committed to downtown, our businesses are committed to downtown, our downtown, you know, is the core of our city and is the core of our state. So the ways that that like the Kiwanis Club can help is by ensuring that folks know downtown is open for business. You know, let's support, let's patronize, you know, our businesses down there, restaurants, you know, any number of things that we can get to. And you all have large voices. And our vendors and our business owners down there need your voices.
Okay, what is the council doing to encourage more adequate childcare and mandatory kindergarten in order to give young children a fair chance for a good education?
Wow, okay. So once again, you guys are coming in with these easy ones. Really like that. Love it. If you remember a few years ago, we actually did commit to high quality pre-K. I think we committed altogether over a period of five years, might have been $15 million. As you all know, education is actually in the hands of the state. And so our commitment when we made it, that we were going to put in, I think it was $3 million a year towards high quality pre-K, was that we would we would show by our example, even though we don't, we're not involved in the education process, you know, that funding, that funding formula is by the state, we would show by our own efforts how important it is, and we would put city money into it. And then our state would then pick it up. Where we are right now, we were funding three, three and four-year-olds. Unfortunately, I think that the state could only justify the funding of four-year-olds. So I'm not sure that we would have the support of all of our constituents to go back into that process again, into the funding, even though our hearts are there and we made that commitment and we followed through with it. I think that we're going to have to ask our state to 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 pick up that that responsibility because it is it is a state function. So I know that's not maybe the answer that you wanted to hear, but it's the answer that we've had to kind of come to when we were thinking about, can we extend this? When we were doing the 2020 budget, because this last year was our last year of funding the high quality pre-K program, there were some serious debates about it. Can we continue to do it? And ultimately, it was decided, no, we can't. We just can't. We cannot spend our local taxpayer dollars any more than we have. And that $15 million was a big hit for us. So, but thank you for, you know, for the question.
I think you've jinxed yourself by talking about easy questions because we've got some harder ones coming here.
Okay, all right.
So what is the latest on body cams for the Indianapolis Police Department?
Okay, so the the body cams, it's been committed to us that by the end of the third quarter, so that's the end of September, that we will be fully functional and fully operational with our body cams, the installation and for all the individuals who are actually out on the street. So the process has started, we, the city itself, you know, we approved funding for that for 2020. So the money was already in place when this began to ramp up. So all that is necessary right now is for our vendor to fulfill our orders.
What is the next step in controlling the panhandling epidemic we are experiencing today?
So I think as I was reading through some of the things that the city has done, we have put more money into into housing for our homeless populations, our homeless neighbors. There are a couple of motels here in the city that we have, that we have long-term rooms reserved for our, you know, our homeless neighbors. The challenges that we have found have to have to do, I think, with mental health and individuals that we cannot force to go somewhere. We just do not have the right to force anyone to leave like a public space like our city market. So the street outreach teams are consistently on the streets trying to document, you know, who's out there, what what help, you know, do they need? Is it is it food? Is it shelter? Trying to determine if we might have some some mental health challenges and trying to direct those individuals to places where they could get assistance, not just the rent, you know, not just the food, but but some form of of medical care. But we cannot force them. And that has been, that has been, I think, our largest challenge. We we put the money for housing, for shelter, and we're doing even more from the health and hospital side. Dr. Kane has even provided, you know, dozens and dozens of rooms out of her own budget. So the biggest challenge is not necessarily the space, it's the right of individuals to say, no, leave me alone.
Great. And we had another one. I think you've really addressed it in that last answer, but can you address the crisis downtown with large vagrant population and safety? I think you've adequately covered that. What is your vision of the quality of life for parks, trees, clean air, and green technology?
Love that question. So proposal number one for 2020 was actually to start an environmental committee, a committee on the environment, that we could then engage subject matter experts on ways that we as a city could move the needle on clean air, on clean water, on sustainability. So notice, it was proposal number one in this new decade. So it is, it is incredibly important to our city, you know, and to our council. And when it came time to allot counselors to various committees, we ran out of space on the environmental committee because so many said, I want to be on that. So just know that it is important to us. I think COVID has kind of thrown us a little bit off, the sort of urgency of COVID, but it does not remove the importance, however, of of long-term viewing, long-term planning relative to the environment. So you have our commitment on that. We will do all that is within our ability to not only move that needle, but to try and gather, you know, colleagues, partners, you know, in that effort. This needs to be, this is, this needs to be something that we as a city, we as a region, you know, do collectively.
Is it not true that education is key to job opportunities? And also, what about home life, single-family homes and the issue of fathers being in the home?
So education is key to opportunities. A model that 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 we tout now a lot, there is a company based in Bloomington, should not mention the name, but it is, it's an international company, still family-owned, 13,000 employees. They wanted to build a new parts manufacturing facility someplace in central Indiana. And they determined that they would look at some of the communities within, for example, Marion County that had the highest unemployment rates, highest rents rate, you know, the lowest homeownership rates, et cetera. And that they would put that new facility right there in that spot. So it gets me actually a little emotional. I say that because they are leading by example. One of their, one of their commitments is, if you want to go back to school, we'll pay for it. We'll pay you eight hours for four hours of school. You don't owe us anything. If you decide you want to leave, then that's fine. A company like this, very few people ever leave. Education, as they, as they, as they even define it, you know, in their presentations to, you know, to myself and others, is that key? We, not only the job training, the skills training, but the encouragement for more education so that they are not just sort of building a set of skills, but working towards the building of a career. And then the stabilization of their households and the stabilization therefore of their neighborhoods. And, you know, that just expands. I've been trying to encourage that, you know, over these last two months with all of the partners who have said, who have come forward and said, what do we need to do? You know, we've become so much more aware of the challenges in certain communities. What do we need to do? And that has been a model that I've been, that I have been touting. If if your product and your and your business model can still flourish and thrive in an area that has high unemployment, you know, underemployment, if there are things that can can solve both issues, then let's do that. Let's invest in that. Because of all the factors, I'll just say one last thing, please, and forgive me for going on long about this. Recently, we asked Savvy, which is Recently, we asked Savvy, which is part of the IUPUI Poller Center, to help us develop data, to understand the sort of root causes of things like violence, poverty, all kinds of things. They say factoring out everything else, whether you were born in a single-parent household, you know, whether you were born in the bottom, you know, quintile, the single most important factor for success in life, not the color of your skin, it's not your gender, it is education. And when we heard that, and they presented that to us last week, last week, Wednesday, I think lights went off in all of our heads. That we can do all these other things, but it's still got to come back to education. And how do we encourage anyone investing in a community? Make that a component of that investment. So, that's the role, you know, in the council, we can't make you do it, but we can sure do our best to, you know, guide you in that direction. And that's the role that we're taking.
Thank you. How important is zoning to you?
Zoning? Zoning? It's very important. Otherwise, we have chaos. I was born, you know, my mother's American. She's ninety-six. My mom is ninety-six and still kicking. Don't get in her way. That's all I'm going to tell you right now. Do not get in her way. Class of nineteen forty-four at Christopher Tadic High School. But my father was Nigerian, and so my parents met at Purdue. My father came over from Nigeria to go to Purdue, to study engineering. And consequently, they moved to Nigeria, and I was actually born in Nigeria. So, this Indianapolis woman and a Nigerian man. In the old capital, Lagos, eight million people. Lagos does not have zoning. And as an architect, as an architect who has a master's in this, anytime I visited some of my father's family, all I can look, all I can think is, I'm horrified at the chaos and the absolute mess that cities that don't have, you know, comprehensive zoning in place, the mess that they become. So, I'm just trying to give you an example that I do know what it's like to not have zoning in place. I have the perfect example of what can happen if you don't have zoning. And I just think it is important. Now, of course, you know, there are always grounds for, like, you know, variances and so on, if they meet some kind of criteria, you know, a larger community plan and that kind of thing. But we must have zoning in order to have some order in the development of our community, and even the quality of life in our community. I wouldn't like to live next to a factory. I'll just say that right now. So, I'll just say it. We have to have zoning.
Great. Really good question here. Are there other cities that serve as best-of-class examples for Indianapolis?
For which thing?
Are there other cities that we benchmark off of, or that serve as best-of-class examples for Indianapolis?
Okay, sure. Our hope, though, is to be that city that serves as the best-in-class. It does depend on things like, if we're talking about development and investments. Seattle used to be a great model. You know, they were able to pour in a lot of heavy-duty investment in attracting new talent to the city, you know, like Seattle. And I think we've used that as a model in many ways to attract new talents, you know, to us. We look at places like Nashville, and they're investing in their downtown. I've got a colleague who is the president of the council in Columbus, you know, who likes to tout that, you know, that Columbus is now bigger than we are, and et cetera, et cetera. Now, up until COVID, I was able to one-up him when I said, "So, tell me about your flight to Paris." "How about your journey?" But now, they stopped it. So, it's like, you know, I have to be mom. It's like, I don't know what to say. But Columbus, and the way that they've dealt with their waterfronts, you know, we've looked at that. We went down to a city in North Carolina, and forgive me, it slipped my mind, and Austin, how did they develop their riverwalks? How did they enhance their natural sort of amenity? Things like we haven't done, like our White River. We unfortunately have not capitalized on the beauty of it. But, you know, the more that we do, I think the more attractive our city becomes, the more attractive our downtown becomes, and I think the more attractive it is, you know, for talent to come to Indianapolis. My son, who's at Purdue, asked me recently, you know, he's studying finance at Purdue, why he should move to a place like Indianapolis after graduation versus a place like Nashville. So, I said, "Well, if you can get a father there to pay your tuition, go," right? But Indianapolis is a city that learns from others. You know, I don't think that we're so proud, and we, you know, this is the way that Indianapolis is going to do it. I think that we have always been smart in the ways that we have adopted and adapted to, you know, the challenges. I feel like places, you know, like San Antonio have been great models for us, in the ways that we do things. So, we're constantly looking at, you know, at other places. It just depends on the model, and, you know, and basically, the kinds of things that, you know, that we're addressing.
Yeah, you might ask your colleague what NFL and NBA games are like there in Columbus. Before I move to the next question, I failed to comment. We've got five Kiwanis members on the call from Jamaica. They've been joining us quite a bit. So, Judith, Gerlins, Sonia, Maria, and Janet, welcome. We are honored to have you, as always. We've got a personal question here. What inspired you to run for the council? Given so many ways one can serve, how did you decide this is where you could have your greatest impact at this time?
Wow, that's an awesome question. There was a lady by the name of Julia Carson. I don't know if anyone remembers her. And for whatever reason, she sort of adopted me like, I became her adopted grandson. I don't know how you can become, how you adopt a grandson as opposed to a child, but nonetheless. And before she died, it was one of the things that she, you know, had encouraged me to do. Get involved. And where decisions are made, they're made here locally. Now, I didn't follow her advice exactly immediately. I just said I was going to run for Secretary of State, but that was just to warm me up for the council. So, but it was actually through Mrs. Carson. And the example that she set, really grassroots, I mean, you know, even her campaign headquarters was in her garage, that things happened at the local level that even she in Congress couldn't make happen, but we can do things here and see the impact of decisions that we make on the lives right in front of us.
Next question's a really good one. I think it's on the minds of many of our members. But how can we get more minority members to join Kiwanis? And I also saw Roger sent you a personal invitation that we won't let you off the call today unless you reply in the affirmative that you're going to join. But, you know, we serve a lot of minority populations, and yet, we just haven't been able to recruit a lot of minorities in our club, and so would welcome your advice.
So, I would imagine a lot of folks don't know the kinds of work that Kiwanis has done, especially like things like the Abraham Lincoln Scholarship. What an amazing, when I first heard about it, I was actually like, wow, what big thinking. You know, as Brandon said to me, this is not about, you know, you are the valedictorian of your class. It is, you have overcome incredible challenges, and we want to make sure that you continue, that, you know, roadblocks that we can do something about can be eliminated. It is coming to a meeting like the Riverside Civic League, and talking to its members there, and I'd be happy to facilitate that. It's actually coming into, you know, communities of color, and talking about the work of Kiwanis, the things that Kiwanis has invested in, which are, in so many ways, the very same thing that communities of color, you know, have been wrestling with. So, you know, places like the Riverside Civic League, Hoville Strong Neighborhood Association, places where we've got, you know, communities of color, Hawthorne, the Hawthorne Community Center. I'm speaking, you know, about the ones in my own district, but it is making folks aware, helping folks to be aware of the work and the purpose, you know, and the drive, you know, and the successes of Kiwanis. I thought I was very wise and knew all that, until Brandon told me about that. And I'm like, "Why didn't I know this?" You know? So, I'd be happy to do it. And yes, where's Roger? There's Roger. Roger, I will do that. So, you just send me what my membership papers are, and I'm on it.
That's awesome. That is awesome. That's a great win for Kiwanis. And when your son returns to Indianapolis, we'd love to have him as well.
Okay, if we can get him back.
Greg Silver has asked about ten questions in one, so I'm going to try to narrow this down. We'll take this as a police question, but are police officers trained to shoot to kill, or why not? Is trying to defuse a situation, does that come first? Do we have a civilian board to review police shootings, and who appoints them?
Okay, so, the second question, I think, is, I'll start with that. Yes, our officers are trained to try and de-escalate a situation. And yes, if there is a deadly weapon that is fired at an officer, yes. It is, as I understand it, a shoot-to-kill. That is not the first line of defense, and, you know, we've been talking about sort of proportional, sort of proportional response. But in the face of a deadly weapon, that is seen as, yes, we can take, you know, we can use our own deadly weapon. But their first line of defense is actually trying to de-escalate situations. And that's how the training currently goes. There was a question, I think, about civil, what was that? Grant, what was the part of the question?
It was, the first part is, are police officers trained to shoot to kill?
Okay.
Or why not? You've answered about defusing a situation. The other one was about a civilian review board.
Okay, so, and Greg, that is like such an awesome question. We currently do not have a civilian board to review police shootings. Police shootings are currently reviewed by other policemen in something called, I think, the firearm review board. What we are moving towards now is the establishment of something called the Use of Force Advisory Board, that will have civilians engaged in such important decision-making. Because just like I think the military, and I'm just using that as an example, it has civilian oversight. You know, the president is commander-in-chief. And our police forces, just like we are accountable to our citizens, you know, the police forces also must have, you know, must have that same level of accountability. So, I mentioned earlier that we have to put public back in public safety, and engage with our civilians. So, if we do move forward, there will be appointments by the council, by the mayor, and by the chief of police, as well as someone from the rank and file of police officers. That's how it's being considered now.
Do you anticipate that Marion County and possibly the state of Indiana will need to shut down again in the next few weeks?
I don't anticipate that it would shut down. I anticipate, and I believe that this is very likely to happen, that we will go back one or two steps. So, you know, I think we are supposed to be in like phase four. It's possible that with this sort of increase in the number of COVID-positive cases, that we could likely see a reversal, back to sort of a level three. I don't imagine going back to a level two, but yes, I would say yes, until we, oh, boy. Until we will have the discipline to maintain social distance, and to wear our masks when we're out in public, you know, around others. And unfortunately, some maybe don't want to do that, but it does endanger others. And I'll just give you a quick example. I have a fraternity brother who is the health commissioner in Gary. And of course, he's a medical doctor. His wife is also a medical doctor. He had parents in Mississippi. He brought them up from Mississippi in March to stay with him and his wife, right? Two medical doctors, because he said, you know, "Our healthcare here is going to be a lot better than yours in Mississippi." What he did not know was that he was asymptomatic. And both his parents came down with COVID. His mother ended up having a stroke and is now in rehab hospital. Now, if that can happen within a household, and I mean, we, because, you know, as fraternity brothers, we actually take turns going to visit the mother, because you can only have one visitor a day. And he lives in Gary, and this was the sort of the best rehab center for her. And the father's also now recovering. I just say that because it can happen. And then, the impacts can be so devastating. So, that is just my plug about, you know, the social distancing and the need for our masks. And yes, it has had an impact. Our numbers have gone up, and they must come back down.
We've got just a couple of questions left, but since Bob is joining the club, you can ask him now weekly questions. We got you committed. Who are the leaders in our country you admire most, and was John Lewis one?
Absolutely. John Lewis, definitely. The experience that he had, it's almost like, you know, a veteran. Veterans are, I think, the most, are the most sort of graced with understanding the impact of turmoil, of war. And he was like a veteran. I mean, he had experienced sort of the worst of a racist past, the horrible things that came out of, you know, the civil rights movement. And yet, I think what it did to him was it tempered him and kept him level, and understanding, and sensitive. And I think that is such an amazing quality in a leader. Not one who's a hothead, but one who waves out, like, if we do X, Y will happen. And do we want Y? And if not, then let's be thoughtful. I think that's what I'm looking for, thoughtful. Do they have to be alive? Or can they also, can they have past?
Your choice.
Well, I do have some historic figures, too. You know, of course, I'm going to, I can't go very far back without even talking about, you know, President Number Forty-four, Obama, and his ability to just stay cool. I think I'm a big fan of like, don't have any drama, let's just think it through, and let's get it done. And then, we can go home, right? One of my, two of my favorites, though, before that, one was actually Lyndon Johnson. His ability to work from conviction, to do what was necessary. Now, I'm not sure I always loved his tactics, but that was a man who drove important change in our country. And having been a Southern Democrat at the time, you know, when he first started, and that, some of the things he did were not popular, he nonetheless, within, was it, three months of the death of Kennedy, had the Civil Rights Act passed by Congress. That was significant. And began, I think, the sort of formalizing of this discussion that we just had today. And then, the other, God, there's so many, but I want to just talk about FDR. And I talk about FDR because my mother talked about FDR, because she came up during the, you know, during the time of the Depression, and how just those fireside chats impacted her household. And that they were, she said, "We felt like our country was under control." That someone was at the helm, that, you know, "We're all in this together. It's going to be tough. But we're going to fight it out, and we're going to fight it out together." And that kind of leadership, where you get everyone, and you admit that there's a problem, and you also, though, point to a solution, that if we keep on this road, we will get there. Let's not fight amongst ourselves. There's no point in that. Let's do this together. Huge fan. And then, one more, sorry. Winston Churchill. A man who, I think I've got to think about like the Second World War. A man who, I think I've got to think about like the Second World War or something. A man who came to power at the right time and with just a gut to see it through. Because I think on the eastern side of the Atlantic, that was pretty much the last country standing in the early nineteen forties. But he did it by grit. He did it by telling the British, you know, here are the problems, but we are British and we will see it through. That's who we are. And they believed it, you know? And they were able to still proceed and, you know, and go about their business and volunteer to be in the military and volunteer their lives. To say, you know what, we're going to save this. This is ours. That ability to inspire was amazing. And so even like this morning, I'm actually, I get, okay, it's true. I'm just this World War II nut. I don't know why I am, but I am. And so I was listening to, you know, this thing on Book and Wall. And anyway, Churchill, most definitely. Gutsy. Did he have some bigoted qualities? Yes, absolutely. But the core of him and his essence as a leader, unquestionable.
We've got about three minutes left. I've got two questions, so maybe we can do a little lightning round on your answers. And you've done a wonderful job. I've really enjoyed hearing this. But does Dr. Una share any thoughts on philanthropy with you? If so, any predictions for philanthropy in our community for next year? She's an outstanding academic and we are blessed with her leadership and knowledge. As a fundraiser, I look forward to your answer here.
Okay, so yeah, she does. Maybe more than I actually needed to hear at any particular time of the day. Most definitely she will share. I think that she will tell you that we can expect a dip in our giving. But that our wealthiest will make up some of that by possibly even giving more. That this is the time that they are all stepping up and especially now that not just the COVID crisis has come up, but that the issues about race and equity have come up. And yeah, so that's given me some hope that going forward, our philanthropic arms have not only stepped up, but will continue to step up to fill some voids. Not just the philanthropic organizations, but the philanthropic arms of our corporations are, you know, have stepped up, actually quite tremendously. So I'll do my best to listen in a little more closely when she's telling me things. So the next time I meet with, the next time that we meet with the Kiwanis, I'll be more up to date. I'll be able to give you the whole spiel.
Great. My fundraising strategy right now is I'm in church three times a week, so I'm doing a lot of praying right now. Very last question. What are your thoughts about the current condition of Circle Center Mall? The recent loss of restaurants and other businesses? What do you think bodes for the future of Indianapolis?
Circle Center Mall, I don't know. It is, it what bodes for our downtown and our retail is folks coming back down to our city, back to the core of our city. And us having to make very clear that downtown is not only open for business, it's welcoming to business, and yet, yes, you are safe coming back downtown. The things that happened in that last weekend in May, that last weekend in May, were an anomaly for our city. We had never, ever experienced such a thing. And granted, it's happened and anything could happen again. I don't think that that is who our city is, and I think that most of the folks who have had an opportunity to reflect, I would say that most do not want to go down that road again. So between that and our businesses reopening and trying to reopen and taking down the plywood, we still have to push the message downtown is open for business. And if we can be convincing, you know, we will see people coming back downtown and enjoying the amenities that we have. It is a challenge. I feel like this is like a time for Churchill. It's a, you know, it's a time of devastation of our downtown, but we have to believe in it. We know what the issues are, but we've got to believe in it. This momentary blip in our history should not determine our future and the future of the core of our state. You asked about Circle Center Mall, that I don't have an answer. We've had too many of our major anchors leaving. And to be frank, I just, I don't know. And it might be possible or it might be necessary that we do some rethinking on the use of some of the spaces.
Well, it's been a tremendous honor having you on the call today. And like a warm Kiwanis virtual round of applause, wonderful job.
Thank you.
We're going to be making a donation in your name to Big Brothers Big Sisters, which is a tremendous organization that helps our youth. We are honored you're going to be joining our Kiwanis Club. And I'd also like to invite you, and you don't have to give me an answer now. We're going to be having a panel on race relations, not just in Indianapolis, but here in the United States on September tenth. And I'll have Taylor, as she sends the application to you, send information on that. But we'd be honored for you to join us as well for that.
Love to.
Loved your conversation today. And let's see here. Taylor, can you help me with our speaker next week? She's from the Audubon Society and I don't have her name handy.
Yep, Donna McCarty.
Okay.
Donna McCarty.
Great. And again, we've got some wonderful speakers coming in future weeks. If you didn't hear the breaking news, Matt Painter will be our speaker on September third, the Purdue basketball coach. So Bob, you can invite your mom and your son to join us for that one. But a big one there, and I'm trying to get a couple other big names. Somebody sent me a note that they appreciate me asking all these speakers. And I'd say, you know, if you followed my high school career, you'll note I have a great history in rejection. So I'm not, my high school dating career that is, and so I'm not opposed. We're going to adjourn today's meeting. I hope to see you next week. If any of the Kiwanis want to stick around for a little social chatter, do so. But Mr. Osley, thanks again. We appreciate your leadership. Honored to have you.
Thank you very much. Take care, everyone.